It's now 6:00 PM. We'll call our meeting in order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please, Maureen.
Here.
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 Thank you, Maureen. Before we begin tonight's WRPS Board of Education meeting, I want to take a few minutes to go over the expectation of behavior for tonight and all future Board of Education meetings. First off, this is a meeting of the WRPS Board of Education that is open to the public. It is not an open forum for questions and answers. Our legal obligation is to conduct the business of the district in an open forum during a meeting that has been publicly noticed in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes. If constituents have specific questions, they can be submitted to either the superintendent or the appropriate district director using contact information that can be found on the district's website. The board operates under the Speak Your Peace Civility Project model as adopted in 2008 and incorporated into board policy, and we expect meetings to operate with civil discourse and respect modeled by all. This is a meeting where decisions are made that impact local WRPS residents and students attending our schools. We are independent individuals who make decisions we feel are in the best interest of our local schools and community, given all information available. At times, that information may come to us in the form of public comment, which is why we appreciate hearing the viewpoints of the public that we represent. While we will not prohibit non-residents from commenting in a public meeting, we can say that the opinions of the parents and taxpayers of the WRPS system are of far greater importance to us than that of non-residents. Before you begin speaking, I will be asking if you are either the parent or guardian of a WRPS student or a taxpayer within our district. If you choose not to provide this information, we will interpret this to mean that you must reside outside of district boundaries and/or have no children attending our schools. The behavior exhibited by some people in recent meetings has been nothing short of embarrassing. All of the people that are seated at these tables up front have the health and well-being of all students and staff as their primary focus. Believe it or not, we do not come to these meetings to be threatened or ridiculed, nor to the people whom we have consulted with around health and safety protocols. We spend a great deal of time and effort combating bullying in our district, and to see such behaviors exhibited in a public forum is very sad to see. People look to us for guidance and leadership, and we have been respectful of all who have spoken in our meetings, but that same courtesy has not been reciprocated. If you can't carry yourself in a respectful, adult manner, please leave before the meeting starts. We will no longer have audience members interrupting, attempting to talk over, or making rude comments during our meetings. If you exhibit this behavior, you will be asked to leave the meeting. We will only accept public comment on items listed on the meeting agenda and only during the designated public comment time. The board will only entertain commentary related to topics listed on the board agenda. If your com- commentary pertains to items not on the meeting agenda, I will ask you to stop, and we will move on to the next speaker. It is not the responsibility of an elected official to please all of the people, all of the time. That would be impossible. It is our responsibility to provide the best education possible for all students who enter our schools. It is also our responsibility to ensure the safety and health of all students and staff to the best of our ability. If residents of the district feel they can do a better job than that of the current board, they are welcome to follow the democratic process outlined in state statutes to complete election paperwork and have their name placed on the next election ballot. Now, as we move into the public comment portion of our meeting, each person participating will have three minutes to speak. You will hear a timer beep when your time is up. Keep your comments civil in tone and content. Individuals bear the personal risk if comments made are defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. I will now call the first individual up to speak, Blake Schultz. Mr. Schultz, do you have children enrolled at RPS? Do you reside within the WRPS attendance area?
Yes.
Thank you.
My two kids go to Assumption High School.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. One of the reasons why we chose Assumption was because, and we're glad we did last year, because they had school five days a week. So, where the public school wasn't five days a week. Anyway, this is my first time speaking. I'm going to be probably short. But I am a resident of Wisconsin Rapids, was born here, went to Lincoln High School. I own a business, and I've been in contact with, ever since the mask mandate started. I wore a mask for about the first hour at work, decided it was not for me, so I've been mask-free ever since. My kids had COVID-19. My wife had it. There are alternatives besides wearing masks. Vitamins, ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine. You know, you just have to do the research. It's there. So, as far as I'm opposed to wearing masks. I think kids are healthy. I think they'll rebound from it. I think the alternative method is to recommend vitamins, eating correctly, and having some alternatives on hand in case somebody gets COVID-19. I know it's real, and so I'm all for alternatives. Wearing masks, I think, I saw my kids playing basketball all last season wearing masks while they were on the court. The parents had to wear masks just sitting in the bleachers. I'm fuming mad over it. So, I'm not going to go away respectfully. I think masks are bogus. I think they need to come off. And if this goes into, if the board starts recommending or forcing vaccinations into kids...
Yes, sir. Vaccinations are not on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Okay, well, masks, okay. I think the masks should come off, and I think masks should be optional if parents really think they need to wear them. So, that's my opinion, and that's, and I'd like to see a show of, I'd like everybody to stand up who thinks masks should be optional for this school year. Thank you very much, and our numbers will be growing.
Thank you. Next up, Anita Ja- Ja- Jaakerson? Am I pronouncing that right? Okay, Jaassason. Okay, Anita, do you have? Anita, do you have children enrolled at RPS, or do you reside within our attendance area?
I'm a Wisconsin Rapids resident for the past 25 years. I have no children, but I have friends that do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to start off by saying that I see no simple logic or common sense going on as far as the mask go. I've looked at studies from many years ago in regards to just the flu, and masks were brought up many times. And the reason why people haven't been wearing masks for the flu is they simply don't work. The data and the studies are out there. They concluded that masks are ineffective for any type of virus. And to put it in this context, it's like trying to keep mosquitoes away through a chain link fence. I mean, that's the size of a virus as opposed to what's in the mask. And with the double and triple masking in that, you get no air. There's been studies that show how harmful masks can be with the trapping of bacteria, and it's kind of like wearing a Petri dish on your face. I mean, even for an hour, this is what happens. And also, I don't see the logic, you know, as far as this virus goes, what the government has been mandating. There's been, you know, we all know about the border crisis and all these people coming through. They're not being tested. They're being shipped all over the country. And in essence, a lot of them are positive carriers of this virus, and nothing's being done about it. But they expect citizens to mask up and shut up, basically. Do what the government tells you, and this is what I don't understand. I know so many people that are on the opposite fence that I am that in the past said that I don't trust the government. I'm not going to do what the government says. But the minute they snap their fingers and say, "You have to do this," they follow along, and they wonder why they call them sheep. You know? I just don't get it. And then, you know, with the censorship and everything like that that has to do with what's going on with this virus. There is a Pfizer study, and this is real, of course, it's being censored and that, but this is straight from Pfizer, the studies that they did. Most of what they're telling us hasn't even been proven yet. You know, it requires time. It requires the people, and it requires, you know, what do they call it, a control group and an active group? I can't remember how they do that. But none of this has been done, and what they did conclude, you know, the masks and everything are just basically ineffective. And using simple logic, how can you go to a restaurant, have to wear a mask? You sit down, you can take your mask off. Are you all of a sudden in this protective bubble where you're not going to transmit a virus? Yeah, simple logic, common sense, you know, it seems to have gone out the window. But thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Heidi Koleski? Hi, Heidi. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS, or are you a resident of our attendance area?
Yep, I have a daughter enrolled.
Okay, thank you.
I am cautiously optimistic by the discussion of the optional masking to start the school year. I am apprehensive about what vested authority to move between mitigation strategies and instructional models and schedules as warranted means. Unfortunately, with the "sky is falling" talk regarding the comeback of COVID with the variants and the inevitable cold and flu season that happens every winter, for the exception of last year, I don't believe optional masks will last long. I truly hope I'm wrong. I want the person that has the authority to change the mitigation strategies and schedules to really research the effects of what these changes and implementations does to our children. Please don't only listen to the information that gets filtered down from the CDC. Please consider that there is super-low asymptomatic spread, the fact that kids aren't really affected by the virus, and they don't really, and they don't spread it to adults. All of these things can be easily found by researching. Also, consider the negative effects these mitigation strategies are having on our children. Mask-wearing actually hurts our kids by increasing the level of CO2 they breathe and can make them more sick by the dangerous pathogens that can be found on them. Pushing the social distancing and plexiglass separation is teaching our kids to be afraid of one another and that they are full of germs that could hurt another person. Quarantining healthy people, just waiting for them to get sick, increases isolation and loneliness. With all of these strategies, it's no wonder the depression and suicide rates are at an alarming, alarming level. Please don't let this year be a rerun of last year. Allow parents to decide what is best for their children, and let kids be kids.
Thank you. Carol? Hi, Carol. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS, or are you a resident of our attendance area?
I have a daughter going into her senior year.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So, my daughter is entering into her senior year. Last year, I purchased her yearbook, and I'm paging through the yearbook. And it shows all these kids with their masks off. And I'm looking at her, and I spoke to her, and I said, "Where's the masks? There's not a page in this yearbook that has a mask on it." So, that was false. So, now she's going into her senior year, her dances, her communication with the other students, her future of class reunions. What's it going to be for her? What's the meaning? When I was in a senior, when I was a junior, high school was great. Had the dances, wasn't afraid of people. What is it for her? What is it for the other students, their future? How was your high school? How was your senior? Oh, gee, I don't know. I was in a mask. We were afraid of people. This is, this is our kids. It's not now. It's future. What's going to happen? And then, wearing, even when I wear the mask, I flew to Utah this summer. I was wearing the mask in the airport, and I'm gasping for air. I have to take her to the chiropractor at least twice a month because of her backpack. The weight I lift her backpack, I can't believe how she can carry that on her back. And then, when I was going through the airport, I'm gasping for air. I can't imagine the students all in the hallway breathing with that. I don't understand the airflow, and then the airflow like today in here, this air in here, and then to wear a heavy mask yet, and then the passing in the halls of the kids. I don't get it. And then, and then they say, you know, the cavities of wearing a mask. So, that's what I have to say. I'm pretty upset with the mask. I'm pretty upset with what she has to look forward to. I'm pretty upset with the dances with the mask. I'm purchasing another yearbook. What's that going to look like? Is that going to be the kids all smiling and not wearing masks again? I don't know, but I guess I'll pay my 60 bucks and see what her yearbook looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Deary?
Hi, Lynn.
Hi.
Do you have children enrolled at WRPS, or do you reside within our attendance area?
Yes, I reside.
Thank you.
Basically, you've heard us come here week after week, by week, whatever it was. And we've given you information. Some of you chose to read only what you wanted to read. You have piles and piles of information in front of you that tell you exactly what these masks do-do psychologically, physically, and for their future, the fear that they're going to endure. I've seen it in my grandkids. And I made them take their mask off when you're going to the store. When they come and see me, it's like, "Take it off. Take it off." And they don't wear it anymore. They got, it was fear that was driving them to wear it. So, basically, y'all have the information. You know in your heart, I know you do. And you're going to have to, you're going to have to do it. You're going to have to bite the bullet, and you're going to have to stand for this community. You're going to have to stand for the students. And as far as the critical race theory, the US-2 squared, whatever. If you were to look up history, Max Horheimer is like the, one of the fathers of critical theory, which is nothing but a bunch of isms. Ageism, sexism, you know, all you guys, I'm telling you, all you men, your head's under a chopping block. You're all a bunch of dominating, bigoted. You know, that's what it's teaching. It's teaching hate, segregation, discrimination, and Marxism. And that's the truth. So, please, study about the masks, vaccinations, the COVID, and the critical race. Because I'm not a bigot. My kids aren't bigots. I don't dominate over any race. And I don't see them as victims. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Van Aston? Hi, Tracy. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS, or are you a resident of our attendance area?
I have three grandchildren, and I am a resident of Wisconsin Rapids.
Thank you.
I guess I just got three concerns, statements, or questions. I don't understand the masks when our border is wide open. Wide open. This shouldn't even be a discussion, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Ewell? Hi, Laura.
Hi.
Do you have children enrolled at WRPS, or are you a resident within our attendance area?
I am a resident.
Thank you.
Okay, my only statement is that I hope you all do the right thing. Please don't let your decisions be based on extra money you can get from the government out of fear or intimidation by the federal and state governments and their cohorts. Do the right thing for the kids. They need the chance to grow in an environment that we all had the privilege of experiencing. Please vote for optional masking and no CRT dash US-2 squared, whatever you guys are calling it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to try to pronounce this wrong, and if I butcher it, I apologize. Julie Dejarle? Is that right? Hey, perfect.
Dejarle.
Dejarle, all right. Julie, do you have children attending WRPS, or do you reside within our attendance area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I am a resident of Wisconsin Rapids. I have been my whole life. I graduated from Lincoln High School. I won't say how long ago. I have several grandchildren who are of school age but have been homeschooled because they don't agree with the current policies held by the school board as far as the masking and the mitigation strategies. I have nothing against people wanting to feel safe. I think everyone should have the right to feel safe. I think everyone should be able to wear a mask if that is what they want to do. I also believe everyone who doesn't want to wear a mask should also have that right. If you believe the masks work and you want to wear it, please do. I don't want anyone to be afraid. I don't want anyone to be uncomfortable. And I think most people feel that way. I hate how divided we have all become over the masks, over the CRT. I want to see everyone come together in agreement. I want to see more transparency. A lot of people are frustrated because they don't know what's going on. If we had more transparency and people understood why the decisions were being made the way they were. I know we're not going to all see eye to eye, but if we could have more communication between the board and the parents. I really appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to speak right now, but unfortunately, it's not a conversation. I'm just speaking at you. I would love an opportunity to have you respond to me and me respond to you in a polite, professional, adult manner at some point in time. Please make it happen. We would all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Graff? Hi, Renee.
Hi.
Do you have children enrolled at WRPS, or do you reside within our attendance area?
Yes.
Thank you.
First, I would just like to reiterate what Julie said. And for those that didn't stand up behind me, we are fighting for their rights to mask their kids as much as we're fighting for our rights not to mask our kids. We are not up here wanting you to mandate, "Don't anybody wear masks in this school." We're opting for freedom. I'm going to tell you a quick story. I have a friend that teaches in Milwaukee. And a couple years ago, she was a lunchroom monitor, had a table with two colored and two white kids, and they got into a food fight. It happens. And she just told them, "I'll tell you what. You guys clean it up. I won't write you up." The two colored kids left. The two white kids sat. They cleaned it up. So, she filed her report. She got called into the office for being unequal. And shortly after that, the Milwaukee School District got together, and they said, "We're giving black kids way too many detentions over white kids. That is not fair. So, we have to give more white kids detention, or we give nobody detention." And the school board voted no detention. Does that sound like equality? Punish white kids over colored kids because of their skin? A pig by any other name is a pig. Whether you call it a sow, a boar, a pork, or a piglet, a glutton, a guzzler, a scoundrel, a devil, a brute, a monster, a rogue, or a low-life, it doesn't matter. It's still a pig, which is what CRT is, which is what diversion, equity, inclusion is, which is what US-2 is. You were all sent an email with a link to the woman who came up with that, that you're going to pay to have her curriculum. Did you watch it? Sounds really good until you get to the 10-minute mark where she says, "You're biased. You need to deny your whiteness. You, just because you're white, are a racist. You need to deny that." How about we go back to teaching our kids reading, writing, arithmetic, science, English? Common sense should be taught. History should be taught, black history and white history, not separately. How about just the history of our nation be taught? Let's forget all about this division. Let's forget about telling them that they're not good enough, that anybody has to be better than somebody else, that they have to deny who they are or what they can do because of this color of their skin. I don't look at anybody here and think, "You're white. You're dark. You're darker." Oh, my gosh. No. I look at you as people. We need to teach our kids that. Let's just teach kindness. Show kindness. Show love. And forget about paying somebody $25,000 to teach you how wrong you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Spiken? Hi, Mike. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS, or do you reside within our attendance area? Okay, thank you.
And I'm a resident.
Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Good morning, afternoon. With all due respect, I was a pig farmer when I was young. I'm here today, going back to last spring, I watched some of the school board meetings. First of all, I want to compliment the school board. For a number of years, I was in different offices and local politics and different things. It's a tough job. Thank you. Number two is masking has become quite a, you know, to issue, obviously. But I'm here to tell you that I urge the school board to watch the state health, your local health department. Look at your information, make good decisions, and continue on that format. How you open the school district this year is fine, but I can reconcile that things are a-changing. And it's you as you, as you as a chairman opened, and I don't know you, John Krings, when you read your mission statement, it is to protect the children. There's no other reason you're here for. As parents, we do that. As grandparents, we do that. And we have to, you take it to task at our school board and our local politics, we do that. I got one thing on masks. I was a pipefitter in the mill for 35 years, and I can, and all the stuff I hear, respectfully for all those that have talked against it, I'm talking for it. When we first started the mill in 1975, there was little protection, a little different thing, not to protect, you know, children, but to protect your life, breathing chemicals and other things. Things have gotten so that you can't go anywhere without being certified on a mask seal. There's tons of training. I used to be a safety trainer there. Masks do work. Are they inconvenient? Do they cause some itching and problems? Am I all in favor of having every child have one? No. Good decisions, good protection. We need our school board to continue on the program they were. And if that involves going back to fully masked, that's fine. And one last thing, school teachers should be fully masked. If they're not, they should be tested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Shudzik? Hi, Mike. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS, or do you reside within the attendance area?
But I do live in the area.
Okay, thank you. The floor is yours.
A while back, I talked about how I turned off the TV, turned off the radio because I was tired of hearing all the fear-mongering and all the, actually, propaganda about COVID, masks, the whole thing. It's propaganda. Why do you think they call television shows programs? Or why they call radio shows programs? They're trying to program you. You know that you felt the big boot of the government on your decisions. They're telling you what to do, how to do it, or you don't get the money. That's wrong. It should be your decision. It should be your choice. And there's going to be a growing resistance of people to what the CDC is talking about because last year, they said that if you had COVID, you were immune. Now, this year, they changed it to only people that are vaccinated are immune. They're telling you the truth. And at best, it's political science. At worst, they have a darker agenda. Like Bill Gates said, "If we're, if we can vaccinate enough people, we can reduce the population by 15%." Why the hell would he say something like that? Come on, people. I want, I don't, you know, I've... Come on, people. I want, I don't, you know, I've talked about challenging you. I've yelled at you. I've asked you to resign. But you know what I would really like? I would really like you to be part of the resistance. I would like you to join us in resisting the government that's doing overreach on all this. Join us. You don't have to say this. You don't have to go along with what they have to say. The doctors, aren't you saying, the doctors and the pediatricians, they're all funded by someone else. Who do you think that is? Big Pharma. They're making money off of it. They're making billions. Oh, yeah, the vaccinations are free, but somebody's paying for it, and it's us. I have a movie that I watched not too long ago called A Hidden Life. It's all about an Austrian farmer who decided to resist what his government was telling him to do. And he said, "What has happened to my government? What has happened to my nation? Why are we doing this?" And he refused to sign that he would follow Hitler. Didn't work out too well for him, no. But you know what they say about it? "The quietest acts of resistance are part of what saves civilization." I'm going to lend this to you guys. I'm not giving it to you, but I'm going to lend it. And you can take some time and watch it. We need to have you on our side.
Thank you. Tony Deweyate? Not sure if I pronounced that correctly. Hi, Tony.
Hi.
Do you have children enrolled at WRPS or do you reside within our attendance area?
No, and no, but I am a Wisconsin, I mean, excuse me, a Wood County taxpaying citizen and also a taxpaying citizen of the state of Wisconsin. I agree. There should be more civility in this meeting, and I, I think it needs to go both ways. There was certain hostility board members had last week, you know. Again, you know, the main thing, I'm going to, I'm going to keep it sweet to the point. I'm very concerned about the integrity and motivation and why the school board seems to be interested in this mask mandate. You know, I did look up some information. I don't know if, you know, I'll find out myself, submit it to the superintendent. And if she doesn't want to follow through, I'll go through the city clerk and follow that legal procedure. But there was a bunch of funding given out to school districts for, I think it was what, Gears? Also care program, you know. You know, how much money, how was that money allocated to help fight COVID-19? Now, now the question, everybody brought up a lot of good points, but if COVID-19 is so hazardous, I see no, you know, like if you have diabetes and you put a needle in a box, I see no hazardous waste disposal areas for disposal masks. If it's that hazardous, let's follow the rules. And now the school, the school superintendent said last week, he said, "Well, we can't always follow six-foot distancing because we have young kids." Either, you know, if we're going to follow this political narrative, then play by the rules. Once again, respectfully, chairs aren't spaced out six feet apart. All the board members are not sitting six feet apart, but they put the mask on to sit there and drive a political narrative. And my final concluding point is who, who are you more concerned of being loyal to? The taxpaying citizens of your school district and what they want? Or following the DPI's instructions, you know, their political narrative pushed down from the teacher union? You know, I watch political news, second largest teacher union in the nation, pushing vaccines, pushing mask mandates. Yet all the people, and mostly, you know, it's been shown that most teachers vote Democratic. Well, Barack Obama has a big party, nobody's wearing masks. Lori Whitefoot's at Lollapalooza, 100,000 people, nobody's wearing masks. She's at a Chicago White Sox baseball game, she's not wearing a mask. If you're going to follow a political narrative, follow the same rules you're projecting on everybody else. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Jean Guston? Hi, Jean.
Hi.
Do you have children enrolled at WRPS or do you reside within our attendance area?
I have grandchildren and I live in Wisconsin Rapids.
Thank you.
Last time I was here, there was a doctor that talked, and she said that the two doctors that had presented to you did not maybe represented for their children, but not hers or anybody else's. I think the parents should make that choice. You guys are not dumb. You're smart. You listen to us. Hopefully, you do the research. I know there's a lot out there and a lot of interesting stuff. Learning is done different ways. Some people learn well by listening, others learn by reading, and others do well by hands-on. So I'd like to do a little teaching. I'm a registered nurse that works in Wisconsin Rapids, and of course, we have to wear the masks. And I'm sure you guys have seen these, well, it doesn't say medical procedure masks, like what we have to wear, but like in Walmart, you see the masks. If you read it, it says this does not protect you against any viruses. On our medical mask, it says these masks are single-use only. Disposable masks, reuse or extended use beyond one hour may lead to infection or cross-contamination. The mask should be stored in a cool, dry place. How many people sweat when they're wearing a mask? These are supposed to be kept dry. Last time I talked, there was, they had done a study where this gal swabbed the inside of her mask. She had worn it for an hour. Grew it in the Petri dish and grew copious amounts of three different types of bacteria. Bacteria is bigger than viruses. I came walking in with one of the board members and I go, "Oh, my God, it stinks in here." And she goes, "It sure does." She had a mask on. If the mask does not protect a person from a smell walking down a hallway, how is it going to protect them against a virus that can only be seen in special microscopes, under special microscopes? I have some disposable masks if you guys want them. I even have a cloth one. But I definitely want you to see the box. I did highlight that area. These have not been worn, but this has got a little dirt on it and this one's got a little marker. But they haven't been worn, so, so they would be good. You'd be protected, obviously, just here. One other thing, quick. If those masks work against viruses, this is my spray I use in my bathroom. N95s, they have to be form-fitted. They put a head or a thing over your head, and they spray in some very disgusting smelling stuff. If you could smell it, they have to refit the mask to you. Those are the best when they're fitted properly. I just need to show you. Now, if you guys, and I picked some decent smelling stuff. If you guys could smell that, your masks don't work against COVID. It doesn't work against a common cold, which is also a coronavirus, and it doesn't protect you against the flu. So please, let the parents make the decisions. I just want to say one more thing, and I know I'm past my time. In Arizona, two different situations, and I know that's Arizona, it's not Wisconsin Rapids, but it can happen here. The board said, the school board said that all people participating in sports had to wear a mask. This one runner was running her race. She collapsed and died at the finish line. Those board members, I'm assuming, feel very guilty, very upset. They immediately stopped the masks for sports. There was another instance that happened later where there were masks optional. This one mother was very afraid that her 13-year-old son might get COVID while he was playing football. So she made him wear a mask. It was optional. It was the parents' decision. Her boy died on the football field. She is going to live with that the rest of her life. Honestly, if I was a board member, I'd rather have the parent live with those kind of things for the rest of their life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Derry? Hi, Mike. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS or do you reside within our attendance area?
I've resided in this area for over 40 years.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to share a little bit of history and have this entered in the public record. During World War II, the German people needed to be controlled for Hitler to be successful. The Nazi government blinded the minds of its citizens. Most like yourselves did their due diligence and did their duty. They listened to their leadership, to the ruination of their country. They did what they thought was right. Surely, the authorities would not mislead them. It's 2021 now, and you are those people. We have shared information pertinent to the care of our children. It appears you have no respect for our views and have already made your minds up. If the German people, the regular officials, had awoken to the horror around them, this world would be a different place today. Most of you have been in your present positions for a long time and probably feel that you've always done a tremendous job when it comes to our, our kids. However, you have been listening to the wrong people. I wish for you to take a stand. Government, be they local, state, federal, or school board, can be wrong. History has taught us, has taught us that lesson. Learn from that and rise above these lies. Forced masking will damage our kids and will push an experimental drug on them. America and our freedoms are being destroyed right before our eyes by well-meaning, unelected officials. In your present capacity, you are complicit in our society's demise. It's not too late. See through the agendas for what they are. And slavery or freedom, there's no other way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ann Lee? Hi, Ann. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS or do you reside within our attendance area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As you know, my name is Ann Lee, and my husband and I are guardians for our eight-year-old grandson. Some of you might find that hard to believe. He's eight, but he is. He was a, he will be a WRPS third grader during the upcoming school year. At the beginning of the 2021 school year, I was very glad to send him back to full-time, in-person school. We struggled through doing school at home the previous spring, despite my many years of being a teacher. Oliver told me that I was his Grammy, not his teacher. His opinion prevented, prevented school at home from being successful. Although I was glad to see him return to his real teacher and his real school, I had my doubts that school would stay open much past Halloween. I have never in my life been so happy to be so wrong. School continued throughout the entire school year, and our students continued to learn from the professionals. For this, I owe you my deepest gratitude. School stayed open because of your courageous decision to require the students and staff to mask, practice social distancing, and wash their hands. Thank you very much. With the current Delta variant making COVID-19 much more contagious and more easily transmissible, I am here tonight to encourage you to resume mandatory masking to protect my grandson and the other students of WRPS. Please do what is right for our students and do not make masking optional. I have been told that until I contacted the school board members, only one other parent had requested that mandatory masking be continued. I believe that that is because most people think school will just carry on as it did last year, including mandatory masking. I am also reminded of something I wish I had remembered more often when I was a member of this board. Most people in our community like what the school board is doing and trust that you will make good and proper decisions. They do not think they need to speak up and let you know what a good job you're, you are doing. I urge you to continue to make their assumptions true. Please, continue mandatory masking to keep our precious children safe. Do not make it optional. Thank you for listening to this one old Grammy, who I believe speaks for the majority of the parents and guardians of our students.
Thank you. Scott Kissinger? Hi, Scott.
Hello.
Do you have children enrolled at WRPS? Do you reside within the WRPS attendance area?
Yes, both.
Okay, thank you.
I was here last time, and I gave you the fruits of some of my research. I have that again. If anyone wants it, I'll pass it around. I'm going to talk mostly about the masking. As to the related action and vote, I can agree with the five-day in-person instruction. I agree with the optional masking. I cannot agree on the rest. The balance of my talk is going to be about my research. As I said, I have two articles and two stories. I hope the time will allow it. The, thank you. The first one is titled, "Former Biden COVID Advisor Concedes Masks Are Not Very Effective." I've, I've got the sites on where it's from, when it's, it's from three days ago. And it says that Michael Osterholm, who's a researcher with the University of Minnesota and was a former advisor of President Biden, he said that, quote, "We know today that many of the cloth face coverings that people wear are not very effective in reducing any of the virus moving in or out." That's troubling enough, but what's even more troubling is later in the article, it says that he knew this a year ago. Yet he's still pushing masks from then to now. The next, the second article is an excerpt from the Wall Street Journal. It's, it was written by a Johns Hopkins Dr. Marty Makary. I think his name is pronounced. It talks about, the title is "The Power of Natural COVID Immunity." It talks about some 80 to 85% of us adults are immune to the virus. It goes on to talk about a discussion of natural immunity, both from beating COVID yourself and also from having antibodies that you're born with. Now to my stories. Both are about two doc, my, my personal experiences with two doctors here in town. The first is, I asked the doctor during a regular visit, what are his thoughts on masking and the vaccination? He said he recommends both, and he gave his reasons. I mentioned to him that his employer requires both, so his credibility went way down. His employer makes it mandatory, so he would get no paycheck. He would not pay his bills. He could not save for his children's education if he did not comply. So the heavy hand of his employer required that and required him to recommend that. I also said, "There is natural antibody testing that we should be doing. Why aren't we doing that? We know from reading stories that people who are fully vaccinated are getting COVID. And then when they get it and pass it along, it is stronger and more lethal than people who have not previously had COVID." My next story is when I took my son to the doctor during hockey season because he was sent home from school for possible strep. He tested negative for strep. I told the doctor, he had a hockey tournament coming up. I said that he's required to wear a mask in his helmet while, while playing. He laughed in my face. He said, "That is absolutely ridiculous." He shouldn't be wearing a mask, let alone during physical activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Reinisch? Hi, Shelley. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS? Do you reside within our attendance area?
I do, too.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, I guess I would like to say that I'm coming to you today not as a employee of the district, because I'm not, but I'm coming to you as a mom, a healthcare worker, a LHS graduate who really enjoyed going to LHS. For what, right? Spending time with my friends, getting to do things outside of school with them, being able to pick on them, being able to, you know, whatever. That's not what's happening. I have a I have a child that comes home on a daily basis and cries because she can't do things with her friends. She is in the doctor's clinic constantly because she has a sore throat. And then she's getting quarantined because every single symptom that they have going on is COVID. At that point, then, we as parents lose all control. Because if we do not, if we do not subject our kids to COVID testing whenever they feel necessary, and, well, not vaccines yet, but, then, they have, they can't go to school because they, because they have a sore throat. I don't know about you guys, but when I get up sometimes in the morning, my throat hurts because it's winter time. You got your heat running, right? It is, it happens, you know? The other reason is I have a child that is in special education. He has, he's on the autism spectrum and does not like things touching his face. And I was told that if I wanted to have him exempt from that, I could go to the doctor and get an exemption for him. Okay, then, what's gonna happen when he goes to school? He's gonna be singled out because nobody's gonna wanna be around the odd kid, right? That's not right. Because just because a child has a disability does not mean that they should be treated any differently. And you and I know they would, because that's just the way kids are. I feel that over this last year, I have seen things in my children that I never thought I would ever see. Anxiety, not being able to sleep, coming home and they're so worked up that they can't even concentrate to do their homework. They are, their self-esteem went right down the crapper because they feel like everything is based upon what everybody else wants them to do. They don't have, they can't make decisions for themselves. If they try and make a decision for themselves, they're scolded and told, "Nope, you have to do this. You have to do that." Well, growing up, I was always told, you know, "If your friend jumped off a bridge, would you?" But right now, we're telling our kids that that's what they're supposed to do. Because if your teacher tells you gotta wear a mask, you better get it on or you're gonna get in trouble. Right? I hope you will make the right decision and put the most important, precious thing first, our kids, when you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Peterson? Hi, Nancy. Do you have children enrolled at WRPS or do you reside within our attendance area?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Nancy Peterson, and I have no children or grandchildren attending the public school system here in Wisconsin Rapids. You probably wanna know why I'm even here then. First off, I'm a former employee of Versal Paper Mill. I started there when it was still Consolidated Papers. I worked there for forty-one years. I paid taxes to support our local school district for forty-one years. All the research I've done always says, "Follow the money." I wanna talk about the CRT grant money. This grant money that is being offered to teach the CRT idea should be no exception. I feel as a taxpayer, I have every right to know where and who gets this grant money. I would like to see a breakdown of how the money is being spent and who is receiving it, right down to the penny. As a taxpayer, I believe I have the right to know what is being taught to our children in the classroom. And to do that, we need more curriculum transparency. I believe Mr. Davis asked last week, or last Monday, if we decide not to do this CRT, we forfeit the money. That's what it sounded like to me. Just remember, Judas sold out our Savior, Jesus Christ, for thirty pieces of silver. As for the masks, I believe it's the parent's choice. There's absolutely no science behind the COVID plandemic or behind the efficacy of masks. We are taking, or you are taking your medical advice from the Wood County Health Department. That's another money trail I intend on following. We already know hospitals receive money for each COVID patient. What about all the school districts or county agencies? You are not the Board of Health, you are the Board of Education. Every child enrolled is a dollar amount for this district. When parents start pulling their children and it affects your bottom line, then maybe you will begin to think differently about making masks optional. Thank you.
Thank you. The last public comment we have tonight was submitted via email from Paula Reeves, who is a parent of two. She's unable to attend the meeting tonight, and she wishes for us to follow the advice of medical professionals and require masking to begin the school year. She states, "My children, ten and eleven, do not have the opportunity to be vaccinated as of yet, but they should have the opportunity to attend school as safely as possible. I realize there is no way to completely eliminate the risk of contracting COVID, but doing nothing and seeing what happens does not seem like a good idea to me. I understand that my children will have the option to wear masks, but wonder how teachers will be able to enforce parental wishes if masks are not the expectation for every person in the building. As a school district led by this board, Wisconsin Rapids did an awesome job mitigating the risk last school year. I urge you to continue with what was learned last year. Masks do make a difference. At the end of the school year, school was conducted at full capacity in a very safe manner, which greatly reduced the spread of the virus and the number of quarantines. The proposal you are considering tonight will not only most likely increase the number of COVID cases in school, but also increase the number of quarantined students as well. We already seen this in other states that have opened school with masks being optional." She goes on to state, "She understands we're in a difficult situation as misinformation has summoned the public thinking masks rather than the virus is the enemy. A mask mandate in schools and other public buildings should clearly be made at a higher government level, but I urge you not to wait for that mandate, which, given today's political situation, may never come. I do not think masking will last forever, but I do think, given the surge we are seeing, it would be wise to begin the school year with masks and make them optional when the number of local cases begins to drop rather than when it is rising." So, that was the last of the public comments. I would like to say personally, thank you for all the people in attendance tonight, for the civility that was displayed. We very much appreciate it. We're here to do our business, and we're trying our best. So, thank you. So, we will now move on to approval of the minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of July 12th and the Special Board of Education meeting open and closed minutes of July 12th.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of July 12th and the Special Board of Education open and close session meeting minutes of July 12th. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. We move into committee reports. The first committee report tonight is Ed Services. I'll be giving that report. We have one consent agenda item, which is the school year opening plan. Before we get into that, I would like to give the board members an opportunity to make any comment they wish to make. Go along the way. Larry, Johnny, do you have anything you'd like to, okay?
Well, I did a lot of time this week. Probably close to thirty hours of trying to gather information from both and reading, reading as much as I could. The biggest thing I did, or what I did is I looked at the CDC guidelines for schools, the American Academy of Pediatrics. Talked to, talked to pediatricians around the state. Both of my kids are in the medical field. One of them is studying to be a doctor right now. He's gonna be in his second year. So, I asked them to give me some names of local pediatricians, and I called the children's hospitals in Milwaukee and Madison. So, overall, I talked to about thirty-some doctors. Eight local doctors, five in Milwaukee, four in Madison, four in Wausau, three in La Crosse, and three in Green Bay. And every one of them strongly, and I asked them a couple of questions. I asked them, "What was the purpose of a mask?" I asked them what their, the age group, they figured should have masks required. And what I came up with is that all of them strongly urged masking twelve and under. They also said masks do work. They are part of a mitigation strategy, and their purpose was never to stop the virus from coming in or leaving, as far as the virus itself. The purpose of the mask is to keep bodily fluids from landing on contact areas while you sneeze, talk, or cough. So, that was for the people that were infected, so that you're not spreading it. Because if I would cough and sneeze and leave something here, it could be there for anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes and still be effective if I was affected with the COVID virus. Somebody touches that and then puts their hand by their mouth, can get COVID. The other part that I asked them about, as far as what kind of cases they have with children at their hospital right now, and what are they seeing? And the Milwaukee and Madison Children's Hospital, their cases in children have increased about tenfold, they said. And I said, "What's the youngest there?" Right now, in Madison, there's a one-month-old on an incubator that got COVID through his parents. And they, at this time, are not sure if the child will make it. But, you know, it's just one of those things, you just, it happens to all ages and all people. And it affects people differently, they said. I said, "So, what is it presenting as?" And they said, "It presents as, in children right now, cold symptoms as well as respiratory type of things." So, when you hear people saying they've got coughs and sore throats and runny noses, that's what it's presenting as. People think it's allergies or other things. And the issue, they say, is that most parents aren't getting their kids tested. I also did, after reading the multiple articles, talking to doctors, weeded through, basically, they said that, you know, we need to protect our elementary kids from spread. And the bigger problem is spread, not as necessarily as getting it, but spread. And as many as you say, kids can't give it to parents. The disease doesn't go by age. You can be a child with it and infect somebody. You can be a ninety-year-old person and infect a child. So, the disease does not know age. And then I've got the multitude. I spent about three hours today reading emails from parents urging us to do the masks. So, there's always two sides of the story. But, that's, you know, as far as, we're gonna, you know, we have to revisit the current motion, I believe, and look at this for the better of all the kids.
Okay, thank you. Sandy?
I have been tossing with this for weeks, one way, another way. It has not been easy. What was eye-opening for me is what has happened at the Boys and Girls Club this week. They had cases of COVID. And because of those cases, more people were infected, and they were like in the double ditches, being quarantined. And also, it was saying that the public health officials have reported being verbally abused and shouted at when they contact other families regarding the cases at the Boys and Girls Club, and that the children need to be quarantined. And because of the lack of cooperation, it's doubtful that these families will have their child tested or even quarantined. I mean, this is something that's happening in our community now. Can this happen in our school? God, I hope not. But I think it's a possibility, because we've seen it at the Boys and Girls Club.
Go ahead, Mia.
Okay, thanks, John. I voted no at our committee meeting last week. And after reading numerous materials, including those given to us by citizens during comments and to our medical advisors, the local ones, the public health, and the emails that I received, I just wanna, I just have two comments that I wanna make. First, the optional masks, to me, make no sense. The efficacy rate goes down if it's not universal. So, it doesn't protect the kids that have the masks. It goes both ways. And two, I believe it's important to continue to follow scientific and medical guidance from organizations such as the Center for Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics that have high standards for evidence-based practices, and also the advice of our local medical advisors and public health officials who have been instrumental in guiding this district since the beginning of the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. I would echo the other board members' sentiments. It was eye-opening to see about the Boys and Girls Club. These aren't other people's kids, these are our kids. I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a grandparent. The decisions we make are for everybody's health and well-being. And if anybody in this audience tonight came to me and said, "There's something that you could do to protect my child or my grandchild," I would do that, whether I know you or not. I think everybody up here would do that. So, we're not the enemy. I mean, we're trying to keep people safe, that's all it is. So, okay. Katie?
As a board member, I've been sitting here, week after week, month after month. I have paid attention, listened, and learned. I haven't interrupted anyone, and I haven't disrespected anyone. I've been pled with, encouraged, insulted, accused, and abashed, and I've been judged. The truth is, most people in this room, including my fellow board members, don't really know my personal opinion on the subject of masking. You make assumptions, but you don't know. The fact of the matter is, my personal opinion is irrelevant. I'm here to speak on behalf of those who elected me. The school board has sought the opinions of our constituents and the expertise of professionals. I've received personal visits, phone calls, and emails from people on both sides of the issue. Every person here has an opinion on the subject of masking. I believe that everyone who has spoken here has spoken what they truly believe. Most of you are quite passionate on this subject. Nobody is wrong. That's what makes us fortunate to be citizens of the United States of America. We don't all have to agree. But it would be so nice if we could learn to get along for the sake of the future of our children. Hatred and contempt have no place here. Anyone who tries to convince me that this topic has not become political is lying. I will listen to you and try to understand things from your point of view. That's my job here. What I cannot abide with is people who use their children as props and pawns to further their political agenda. Children are the innocent victims of the behavior of the adults in their lives. I'm not pointing the finger at one side or the other. Both are guilty. You may assume that what you are doing is not harming your child, but you don't know. Many of you can remember how you felt the morning of September 11th, 2001. That was one of the most devastating things I've experienced in my life. But that common enemy united us as Americans. We detested a common enemy, even if we were unsure who that common enemy was. How is it that this enemy, the coronavirus, that has killed exponentially more people than the terrorists on that day, has so brutally divided us? Almost three thousand innocent victims from all walks of life died in those terrorist attacks. Even if you believe the deaths attributed to coronavirus are exaggerated, you have to believe the number surpasses three thousand. Why are our fellow Americans being villainized rather than the virus? We all want our children to be happy and safe. Can we use that as common ground? I'm asking some of you to admit that masks do affect the experiences of our children in a more negative way than you now acknowledge. I'm asking others to accept that although they are not a perfect solution, masks do help decrease the spread of the coronavirus. This decision is not only about our school district. This difficult decision is being made by organizations and companies all over the country. We receive new information every day about the pros and cons of masking. The information we have today may be obsolete by the time we wake up tomorrow morning. What I have learned over the past several weeks is that people who believe masking is harmful to children are very vocal and persistent. However, from my experience, they are not the majority. Therefore, I would like the board to consider an alternative motion where masks or face coverings are mandated for all persons under the age of twelve and strongly encouraged for all unvaccinated individuals.
Thank you, Katie. Troy?
I'll just be brief in saying this isn't an easy decision, but I still stand with the motion that I put forth last Monday night. I think to start the school year, we should start with an optional model. From what it goes with from there, I don't know. But I do think that we should stick to what we had put forth Monday night and start the year with an optional model.
Okay. All right, so, Craig, I guess we'll let the discussion start with you, as far as our meeting last Monday?
Okay, very good. So, as you recognize, and what's reflected in the minutes was a modified approach, which was to go optional, attending five-day week in person, but to go optional on the front end, see how things shape up. That was the recommendation, that was the conversation at the time. And then the secondary conversation was to vest authority in yourselves as a board. That was a modification from the administrative recommendation, but vest authority in yourselves as a board. As a board, pardon me, to implement or change any mitigation strategies or other things as they arise, and then also including potentially moving between instructional models, which I sincerely- I sincerely hope we do none of, but I suppose that's a potential. So that's what that encompassed. I think it's quite clear that whatever's decided upon will be implemented. I'll do my best to make sure that whatever board action is taken, that is exactly what the expectation will be. That, of course, will be communicated to parents, and staff are going to do the best job that they can to make those things happen. So, you know, again, I think ultimately, one way, shape, or form quarantine requirements is outlined by the state DHS and communicated to us by public health. There's not really any opportunity for us just to say, well, we're not doing that. We're not quarantining kids. That would be an example of deliberate indifference, and we would likely be on the losing end of litigation in that regard. That's not a guarantee, because, of course, it's not been litigated. But one would argue, it's pretty tough to say why you're not following that in terms of trying to keep kids safe. So regardless of the approach, if the masking is required, there is some modified quarantine guidelines that can be enacted, which would be very similar to how we ended last school year, such that the physical distance requirements, if everyone is appropriately masked, becomes three feet rather than six. And then you have the opportunity, a greater opportunity, to quarantine proportionally fewer people. If it was mask optional, some of that approach would be based off of, number one, the number of people wearing masks, which if it's not 80-plus percent, is going to be inconsequential. So one would argue it's likely going to be the requirement as if no one was wearing a mask. And then the quarantine requirement would be a six feet of social distancing, and your quarantine groups would be, of course, larger. However, in that approach, you would have some ability to identify whether or not there is school spread. Because, again, as we operated last spring, when we were back to five-day-a-week in person across the board, we did have the mask requirement and saw very little subsequent school spread. Like I said, whatever the ultimate decision is, is what myself and our administrative team will do our best to implement. There'll still be a medical waiver, if it is a requirement, very clearly, that was implemented last year, and that would still be the case this year. And we'd work through it step by step. But if that is the case, it's pretty easy to point to for most parents that experienced it last year, because it would be very similar to, basically, the month of May, one would argue, five-day-a-week in person, and then various mitigation strategies, including mask requirements. And then just as another point to current circumstance, as a result of the Woodconey Dashboard, there's currently 84 active cases. And our portion of that, within our district boundaries, pardon me, is 46. Just as a point, based on what we had discussed last week. When we were in the heat of the craziness last year, we were talking, of course, several hundred cases. I still think that regardless of the decision-making, whatever we implement, it won't be a crisis where we have, you know, the first day of school, 10 cases of COVID, and we're quarantining, you know, hundreds of kids. I think it would be a case, or maybe two, and we would have that opportunity to see what transpires. But again, the decision-making around do you implement masks or do you not implement masks has minor implications in terms of our quarantine obligations, as well as the baseline that we know that that was effective last year.
Thanks, Greg. Any, John, go ahead.
Well, as far as, I think we need to do a couple of changes. I don't think we, or I can't currently support this motion as it is currently written. Part of the problem, or part of the problem was a change, and I thought about it on my way home last night, or last week, from the school board meeting, about having the board do this action as far as, I think we should change it back to the authority of the superintendent, just for the fact that if we have the board do it, there is a litany of legal issues that we have to deal with as far as meeting notices, and making people aware of having a meeting to do this and that type of thing. Because we may not be able to react fast enough if something happens within a 24-hour period that we have to have to have the meeting, and then 24-hour notice to the public so that, you know, we're having a meeting. And I don't think this will necessarily fall into emergency statutes where we could go like two or four-hour meeting times. So that, I think we should probably change back to the authority of the superintendent, like it was originally written in three and four. As far as from what I've been hearing on the, from all of the doctors I've talked to and their recommendations, and all of the people, and the fact that they're concerned in Madison, Milwaukee, now the amount of children that are having cases, I really struggle with this as far as I originally, and I was on the fence when I, when we made the motion last week because of the numbers were low. But the numbers have changed, and as I was coming, leaving my house tonight, listening or hearing the five o'clock news about Aragemi and Lincoln Counties now are being, they're in the high spread rate, so there's, their health departments are recommending everybody wear masks when they're indoors because of the spread they're having in their counties. And that's not too far away from our county. So I guess I was, I could support optional at the high school, but unfortunately, 12 years old runs about sixth grade. So that means Rams has six and seven and eight. So two grades would technically not have to be protected, but the sixth grade is within the same building. So I guess I would be looking for mandatory, or mask mandates for Rams and the elementary buildings to protect the 11, 12-year-olds and under.
Go ahead, Sandy.
On that motion from last month, or last week, I think we add to need, need to add a number five and to amend the motion to allow the superintendent to implement modifications in the short term for up to 72 hours, allowing for the posting and convening of a meeting of the board to take official action.
I think that's a good idea. As John stated, with meeting notices being as they are, it would be impossible to hold a meeting to address in a timely fashion what needs to be addressed. I think that'd be a good amendment.
I agree, I could support that.
Go ahead, Mary.
And I guess I would agree with John. I would like to have seen universal, and I know that that's not something that we like, but I could live with the high school and just going from, you know, 12 and we do those.
So what is the best way to address an amended motion? Do we read it as such and amend it, or do we vote and then make a new motion with the amendments in place?
Since the meeting already made a recommendation, you should probably add.
Okay. Okay. So then I will read the motion in the second, and we will vote on what was there. Okay. There was a motion in a second to, number one, have students begin the 2021-22 school year attending five-day in-person instruction at all levels. Number two, have masks, face coverings be optional for all age levels, yet strongly encouraged for unvaccinated individuals. Number three, approve of granting authority for the superintendent based upon district and local circumstances to implement any or all mitigation strategies necessary to maintain in-person learning to the degree possible.
John, you had to read ES1 below.
Oh, I apologize. That was the first one. All right, I'll start over. We had a motion in a second. To have all students begin the 2021-22 school year attending five-day in-person instruction at all levels. Two, have masks, face coverings be optional for all age levels, yet strongly encouraged for unvaccinated individuals. Three, vest authority in the board based upon district and local circumstances to implement any and all mitigation strategies necessary to maintain in-person learning to the degree possible and maintain a safe and healthy learning environment for students and staff. And four, vest authority in the board to move classrooms, schools, or the entire district between virtual, hybrid, or other instructional models and/or schedules deemed appropriate given the circumstances. Could we have roll call vote on that, please, Marine?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Do I understand that?
Take the microphone, Larry.
If this passes, that masking will be optional? And for, if it is, for whom?
For all. That was the motion.
Okay. No.
He said no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bumble?
No.
Mrs. Rayle?
No.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
No. Okay, we can resume discussion on this, then. I guess I had a couple of questions. One thing that last year, when we had students moving between virtual and in-person, we're not able to continue to do that this year as we did it last year, are we?
In regards to what?
Was students would start out in virtual, and then they would be in the classroom, and then some went back to virtual and back in the classroom. We had a lot of back and forth with students. Are we capable of maintaining that through this coming school year?
Yeah, so regardless of the approach, there's still K-8 Central Oaks Academy, which is a virtual slash off-site programming that's still available. And then, of course, Lincoln Virtual School for Lincoln High School kids. So those are clearly not, you know, they can be off-site. Central Oaks Academy has some kind of hybrid approach on Wednesdays and Fridays where groups, kids come in and do some school-based activities, but it is by and large an off-site program. So that is K-8. Lincoln Virtual School is 912. With regard to, because I want to clarify, I don't anticipate moving in any capacity to virtual because of our inability to staff a building, or because too many kids have COVID or are quarantined and so forth. But if kids are quarantined, or your kids are having to miss school, then very clearly they are able to maintain their education to a degree. So we're not talking about shifting a kid if we're operating like we are to conclude the end of the school year. We're not talking about saying, okay, you're out for two weeks, so do this virtual stuff and then come back. They would stay largely with their class, kind of like, you know, any absence that we would normally experience. With regard to transitioning between our virtual or off-site program and in-person learning, so are you able to jump around, which is a little bit of a different thing? So can you start the school year virtually and then join in-person later and do that throughout the year? The answer to that question is yes, but as you recall, we cleaned it up a little bit because it became pretty significant with gaps. So timing is important. And what we would do is, if you start virtual and it's a week or two into the try, and you wanted to shift back to an in-person environment, we can accommodate that. If you get much further past that, then our advice is, of course, to finish the virtual instruction at trimester and then join a brick-and-mortar classroom following that, or vice versa. So if you started in-person, nope, don't want to do that, I'm going to go virtual. We're going to encourage making those choices within those timeframes. And I say encourage because clearly these are all communications and conversations we have with parents. It's not like this is what you're going to do. But usually we describe, look, if you're halfway through the try, it doesn't make a lot of sense to shift mid-season here, so let's finish that through the end, and we'll get you good to go for the beginning of try two, as an example. But we have worked with families in various cases to, you know, accommodate, meet their needs to whatever degree necessary. So that's kind of two different things. And our approach, again, is five-day-per-week in-person instruction, which means absences should just be the normal variety, and then, of course, if a kid is quarantined, either positive or quarantined, until they can return. And that would be, once again, just like you're absent for some other reason. And thankfully, a lot of our stuff now, because of last year, is online, and students have that capability. If, of course, they have access, we can still provide access in the short term if necessary. So I don't foresee that being significant disruption. Nonetheless, being outside of a classroom in person is not a substitute for being off-site. So clearly, we're going to do our best to try to minimize that, and then, of course, work with families and kids through whatever that scenario is. That'd be true regardless of the masking discussion. So that's just kind of, you know, whether we do require masks or don't require masks, that's going to be the case. There's going to be positives, there's going to be quarantines, and we're going to have to meet the needs of those students.
And so the public knows, we were notified by the busing companies a week and a half ago that masks will be mandatory on school buses. That's by federal edict, I believe. So regardless of what the busing companies choose to do with that, that's independent of the school district, but their feeling on it was the federal mandate is that anybody riding in a public transportation setting will be masked, so that their expectation is all students riding the school bus will be masked.
I'd also like to point out that I'm not advocating masks school year long. What I'm advocating is that we protect the kids up front from the spread, since the Delta variant is going rampant. And as we get more information and the fact that it's lessening or whatever, we can readdress and go to masks optional as it makes sense to do with local health conditions. The issue I have is that the last thing I want to do is start the first week of school, and then all of a sudden, we have a variant, and all of a sudden, we have four, or five, or six elementary classes that have to be isolated or quarantined. And we know what kind of effect that has. So the quarantine's the biggest issue. And that's what we're trying to eliminate, is the fact that we have to do the quarantine per health department and state DHS and all of that. Whether you like it or not, that's what we have to abide by. So I'm not advocating for the whole year, I'm advocating for the start, to see so we can get through this first month, and then readdress it as the health, as we get more health information current to, it would be end of September, beginning of November, that type of thing.
That would give us the best opportunity to keep our schools open five days a week, which if we've learned anything in the last year and a half, that's important. And the more we can have the kids in the building, the better off they are.
I would like to make a motion that students begin the 2021-22 school year attending five-day in-person instruction at all levels. That masks or face coverings be mandated for all persons under the age of 12, and strongly encouraged for all unvaccinated individuals. That the board grant authority for the superintendent based upon district and local circumstances to remove any or all mitigation strategies, as long as such a move will not compromise a safe and healthy learning environment for all students and staff. And that the authority be vested to the board to move classrooms, schools, or the entire district between virtual, hybrid, or other instructional models and/or schedules deemed appropriate given the circumstances.
Katie, did you want your motion to read under 12 or elementary and middle school buildings? Because the 12-year-old hits right in the middle of the middle school building.
It's going to be an issue in sixth grade if we do the 12 and under. So if you are going to require, I would say, either say for sixth grade and, you know, lower, or, as John said, Rams in elementary, because you're going to, you know, when you reach your 12th birthday, life hasn't changed that significantly. So if that's the case, I think you just need to address sixth grade or Rams as a building.
Okay, then I would amend that to say that masks and face coverings be mandated for all persons in the elementary and middle school, and strongly encouraged for all unvaccinated individuals.
Okay, we have a motion in a second that have students begin the 21-22 school year attending five-day in-person instruction at all levels. Have masks or face coverings be mandated in the elementary and middle school buildings, yet strongly encouraged for unvaccinated individuals. Approve of granting authority for the, did you want the school board or the superintendent to have the authority?
Superintendent.
Okay. Authority for the superintendent based upon district and local circumstances to implement any or all mitigation strategies necessary to maintain in-person learning to the degree possible and maintain a safe and healthy learning environment for students and staff. And four, approve of granting authority for the superintendent to move classrooms.
I said the board.
Oh, okay. Authority for the board to move classrooms, schools, or the entire district between virtual, hybrid, or other instructional models and/or schedules deemed appropriate given the circumstances.
Clarification, is, are three and four both board or superintendent?
According to how?
The way I read it, the way I read it, I thought, I said that we would grant authority to the superintendent to remove the mitigation strategies, as long as it would not compromise the safe and healthy learning environment of the students and staff. And that the authority be vested in the board to move the classrooms. Again, that might have that 24-hour, 48-hour caveat that we had talked about in order for, give ample time for the board to convene to discuss such a matter.
Because we wouldn't be moving two masks, we would be moving away from them. So that would be more time on the front end to schedule a meeting. It wouldn't be so much of a rush to get it done.
Did she mention optional for the high school?
Well, it was no elementary, middle school. And then strongly recommended.
Okay.
I'll accept those changes.
All right. Could we have roll call vote, please, Marine?
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
No.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mr. Bumble?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and moving on with the minutes. We have in our updates, we had an update about the seclusion and restraint annual report. Steve Hupp, our director of pupil services, presented the annual seclusion and restraint report. Historical and current data was shared with an additional data set on where incidents were directed towards staff, self, or other students. An overview of district An overview of district training and resources was shared. A focus for 21-22 is to ensure that training cycles are maintained to keep certifications current with prioritized training for pertinent staff members. Then we also had a update on the district equity-related services contract. Mr. Hepp presented a proposal from U.S. Square Incorporated to provide equity-related support services to the district. The cost of the contract is $20,500, which would be paid for using district flow-through dollars. Engaging with U.S. Square for equity-related services will help the district develop action steps to address racial disproportionality in educational placement. As a district identified with significant racial disproportionality, 15% of its IDEA/EA budget must be allocated to address student needs. Under the proposed contract, U.S. Square will provide training and support to teachers in their practice. District-level training of administration is also included in the agreement. All staff will have the opportunity to receive training if they're interested. We asked questions about who makes the determination on the disproportionality identification. Superintendent Burne provided an explanation around how the district was identified through federal and state initiatives, which changed the cell size used to calculate and determine disproportionality based upon student demographics. Numerous districts across the state have been similarly identified and are working to address and meet federal requirements. The state of Wisconsin is one of the worst-performing states in terms of the achievement gap between students of color and white students. As a result, exploring ways to address equity concerns, fully meet the needs of students regardless of race or other demographic, and ultimately close the achievement gap is not unique to our district. Mr. Burne further explained that when the topic of equity comes up, it can be misconstrued or conflated with the topic of critical race theory. He clarified that equity has to do with finding ways to meet the needs of kids regardless of skin color or other factors, and critical race theory is not taught within our schools. Effectively addressing equity concerns, particularly when it comes to doing so for non-white students, may at times be done best through engaging with a consultant such as U.S. Square for proper coaching and support since they have extensive expertise in this area. And with that, the committee recommends and I move approval of the balance of the business, of the meeting minutes of the Educational Service Committee meeting of August 2nd, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes from the Educational Service Committee meeting of August 2nd, 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. We'll move on to Business Services. John?
Thank you, John. Business Services met on August 2nd and we, out of our meeting, we, first of all, we had no public comment. So the meeting was called to order at 7:30 and actionable items out of our meeting, we had. Did anybody want any of them held out? Okay, hearing none. We'll go BS one is a motion to replace the River City High School parking lot. The parking lot at River Cities is in terrible condition and is well beyond its useful life. We have received only one quote from American Asphalt to replace the parking lot. So the committee recommends and I move accepting the proposal from American Asphalt to replace the parking lot at a cost of $72,187, which will be paid from the building and grounds budget. BS two was replacement of air conditioning condensing units and evaporators at Washington Elementary. Two of the four remaining air conditioning condensing units at Washington Elementary have failed. The remaining two units are at the end of their life. All of the units are over 30 years old. We have received two proposals to replace all four rooftop condensing units and evaporators. And the lowest bid was Tweet Garrett at $74,504. So the committee recommends and I move accepting the proposal from Tweet Garrett to replace Washington Elementary Schools' four rooftop condensing units and evaporators at a cost of $74,504 from the buildings and ground budget. BS three was the supply bid. It's the bid for paper, colored papers, supplies in the school. And this year, clay was separated out as a separate purchase. Committee moves and I recommend that we approve the, accepting of these bids from multiple vendors at a total cost of $88,701.60 to be paid from the district supply budget. And BS four is our final item, and that is PAC Stage Electric Winch Replacement. Eric came in and talked to us and received an opinion about the winch from Main Stage Theatrical Supply. The electric winch is in concern raises and lowers state lighting and fixtures associated with power cables. The drum shaft is worn out on the size of the rotating drum, causing grinding as it rotates within the bearing. No further adjustment or repair for the system is available and replacement parts are no longer manufactured. For safety reasons, it's recommended that we replace the entire assembly with a new motor, gearbox, drum assembly, lift lines, and necessary motor controllers. The district did receive two bids on this and we are going with the higher bid due to the fact that the Main Stage Theatrical Supply Company has equipment already in the PAC that is compatible with and communicates with this new system. If we went with the other company, which is the current system that they have in there from Wanger Corp., it would not have that communication ability and also would limit the upgrading of the lighting system, which they look to do in the next two to three years. So committee recommends and I move accepting the bid from Main Stage Theatrical Supply, less the sales tax for $36,675, which will be paid with encouraged performing arts center funds.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve BS one through BS four. Can we have roll call, please, Marine?
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bumble?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Pet?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Then the balance of our meeting was going over purchase, general purchases and updates. We did have a discussion about moving out of the, out of the updates portion of our, the stuff related to the quadplex and the turf or the field, football field track updates, since most of that is already, it's already been approved and if there's anything major that we need to see or have to look at, then it will come to the committee as that, as that format. So committee moves and I recommend a third and two minutes. The first minutes would be the July 27th closed session minutes and today's August 2nd minute. Last Monday's August 2nd minute.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes of the Business Service Committee regular meeting on August 2nd and the closed session meeting on July 27th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Craig, what was, you wanted clarification?
Yeah, just as I was sitting here regarding action on Ed Services and our approach for this year, the, oh, boy, no, I have to rec, let's see. The third bullet point, the third thing would be for the superintendent to remove mitigation strategies, which is perfectly fine. But my question is, at Lincoln High School, for example, in River Cities where it is optional, at least as it was acted on currently, if we find ourselves in a scenario where we have a COVID case in a kid in that school and then we see that there's subsequent spread from close contacts, i.e. more than what we saw last year, which was virtually none. So it clearly wouldn't be one or two, but if you see a number that it's like, you know, five close contacts are positives or eight or, you know, depending upon how many close contacts there is. Do we, we want an emergency board meeting scheduled to implement the mask requirement at Lincoln High School in River Cities? Do we want to, so I, clarity in that regard because that clearly wouldn't be removing a mitigation strategy. You would be implementing a mitigation strategy at that building. And that's entirely feasible, one would argue, because the population is roughly 25-ish percent vaccinated. Again, if that's what, you know, pans out.
I would say that what we want to do is because those people are at an age where they have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, if they so chose, that if we do deem it necessary to put in more mitigation strategies, that that would be something that where you could request maybe a 48-hour notification to the board to convene in an emergency session and we could discuss it then.
Would I, in the short term, have the authority to implement that and then get it on the docket ASAP? So for example, where this information's coming to me, if it's true as it was last year at 8:00 PM on a Sunday, and things are not looking good for Lincoln High School, let's say, case numbers-wise. To me, it would not be wise to go, eh, let's wait till Wednesday where we can get a board meeting convened. So in the short term, now, when I say short term, I would be stunned if it would need to be more than three days. I'm guessing most of the time too, because again, your statutory obligation is a 24-hour posting requirement, which means we could send an email communication to Lincoln High School staff, and this is as an example now, of course, and parents and say, hey, folks, effective Monday, or, you know, do the best you can to require, we're going to have masks required, you know, first thing Monday. That'd allow us to schedule the board meeting on Monday, potentially even post it, you know, that afternoon or evening, which would mean we could conduct a board meeting to take action on that on Tuesday. So I would typically see it happening within 48 hours, but if we see the wheels are falling off, I don't know that we want to wait, you know, for two or, maybe two or three days to make that determination.
I believe that the wording of the motion would allow you the authority to implement any and all mitigation strategies necessary. And then the board has the authority to move the classrooms, the schools, or the entire district. So you would absolutely have the authority within that motion to make that decision and implement it.
The motion reads to remove mitigation strategies. So I think that we could amend that motion to say remove or add mitigation strategies as necessary within, with a limited time period.
Do we, do we need to have a new vote on that, Marine?
I think you probably will want to do more.
Okay. Okay. I think we could just add the language in number three, approve granting authority for the superintendent based upon district and local circumstances to implement any or all mitigation or removal strategies. Would that satisfy? Implement or remove mitigation strategies? Okay. So would you make that motion, Katie?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. Would you like me to read the whole thing or just the amended part? Okay, we will amend number two, or number three to say approve granting authority for the superintendent based upon district and local circumstances to implement or remove mitigation strategies necessary to maintain in-person learning to the degree possible and maintain a safe and healthy learning environment for students and staff. Thank you, Greg. We have roll call, please?
Mrs. Pet?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bumble?
Yes.
Mr. Rail?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Just to clarify, this is as a whole to the motion? Okay, um, no.
Mr. Craig?
Yes. Okay, thanks for the report, John. We'll move on to Personnel Services. Sandy?
Okay, Personnel Services met last Monday, August 2nd. From that meeting, we had no public comment. And from that meeting, we have six consent agenda items and they are as follows. Committee recommends and I move to approve the five professional staff appointments. Is there any change in number two, Brian?
Yes.
So if we'll take out on the second page, the fourth name down, Emily, that would be struck. She's decided not to come. So number two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the eight support staff appointments. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one professional staff resignation. Four, the committee recommends and I move to approve the five support staff resignations. Five, the committee recommends and I move to approve a 1.23% wage increase to the following employee groups. Psychologist, athletic director, food production coordinator, food services, school nurses, computer technicians, PAC director, PAC assistant coordinator, network manager, systems manager, instructional software support, confidential secretaries, custodial and maintenance, AV coordinator, van drivers, and office and clerical and aid support staff retroactive to July 1st, 2021. This is keeping in line with the CPI. Six, the committee recommends and I move to approve a full-time custodial position to cover Pitch Early Learning Center in River Cities High School. Remember, we've got a lot of kids moving to Pitch now, so we're going to be splitting a custodial between those two.
I'll second those motions.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve PS one through PS six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then Brian Oswald, our Director of Human Resources, shared that the COVID addendum that we put in the employee handbooks for last year, 2020, and 2021 will be removed. And because of many changes, there's going to be new protocols that will be coming and added to the handbook that is in the process of being worked on right now. We'll learn about it in the coming weeks.
That won't be added to the handbook. That'll come directly from administration to staff, just so.
And let's see, we have, we had actions in a special open and closed session of October 2nd, 2021 to approve the resignation of a professional staff and to waive the liquidated damages.
That one would have to be a separate motion.
Right. Okay.
So that was for the meeting minutes? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes of the Personnel Service.
Got to approve the, the open and closed minutes where we waived the liquidated damages.
So that's in addition to or separately?
We need action on that actual, the item or the resignation request.
Okay.
That's probably the next motion.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the resignation request with the waiving of liquidated damages. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and with that, I move to approve the regularly committee meeting minutes of August 2nd, 2021 and the special open and closed session committee meeting minutes of August 2nd, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes of the Personnel Service Committee of August 2nd and the special closed session and open session meeting held on August 2nd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We'll move on to agenda referrals and information requests. Does anybody have anything this month? Go ahead, Larry.
I had one thought. When we were at one of the big meetings here, someone suggested we have the Pledge of the Flag. And I wondered if we could have some language that if it's requested, we would certainly do it. But there are some language that would allow it to happen.
And just so the public knows, typically our committee meetings, there's no one in attendance. So it's meant no disrespect. We just, there's nobody here, you know? When we have people here, we do say the Pledge of Allegiance. But the night of the committee meetings, typically there's been no one in attendance. We just take care of our business. So that's what Larry's talking about.
There'd be no reason, in my opinion, to not have it prior to Ed Services. I mean, that's a committee of the whole anyway. Clearly, it doesn't hurt. It spends, you know, less than a minute of people's time and it's out of respect to our country. I don't think that that would be a big deal to add it. I don't think we would need to do it at each subsequent meeting. For example, as we then would, you know, go to Personnel Services and Business Services, kind of like playing the anthem to start, you know, an athletic event. You don't do it before every single game just to kind of kick off the day or the evening or the afternoon.
Can we have that added to our agenda then to start the meeting for Ed Services? Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the legislative agenda. Troy, what's new this month?
Thank you, John. I will be pretty brief this month. It's been a pretty quiet month in the legislative realm. But there's two pieces I want to discuss, one at the state level and one at the federal level. And then that really, that'll, that'll be it. That'll take us into September. The one piece at the state level that I want to discuss happened in late July. On July 27th, Governor Tony Ebers called the legislature into special session on July 27th to take up his proposal to do what's best for our kids in schools, to overall boost funding for Wisconsin's K through 12 schools and higher education by 550 million. The legislature convened and ended the special session with no discussion or overall consideration of the governor's proposal. The legislative blog, excuse me, will continue to follow any developments on school funding going forward and other forthcoming legislation that impacts our schools. And if there's any updates by next month and in future months, I'll be sure to have them your way. The second and final piece that I will mention tonight is a federal one. On August 1st, the U.S. Department of Education released a return-to-school roadmap. This acts as a resource to help support students, schools, educators, and communities as they prepare to return to safe, healthy, in-person learning this fall. This roadmap provides key resources and supports for students, parents, educators, and their communities. Including, included in the roadmap includes three landmark priorities that Including, included in the roadmap includes three landmark priorities that districts, schools, and communities are encouraged to focus on to ensure that all students are set up for success in the forthcoming year. These priorities include, one, prioritizing the health and safety of students, staff, and educators. The second piece, building school communities and supporting students' social, emotional, and mental health. And the third piece, accelerating academic achievement. As part of the overall roadmap, the department will release resources for practitioners and parents on each of these priorities and will highlight schools and districts that are using innovative practices to address these overall priorities. As a part of the launch of the return-to-school roadmap, the department released a couple, a couple pieces that are on the legislative blog. A fact sheet for schools, families, and communities on their return-to-school roadmap, reviewing the three priorities and elevating schools and districts that are addressing each in effective and different ways. On the second piece, the roadmap released a guide for schools and districts outlining what schools can do to protect the health and safety of students. And third, a checklist that parents can use to prepare themselves and their children for a safe return to in-person learning this fall. The full landmark and the department's roadmap is available on the legislative blog for, for anybody interested in looking at it in a little greater detail. But that, that's really it. It's been a, been a lighter month in terms of legislative policy, so that takes us to September, and I'll certainly let you know if there's a update on state funding going forward.
Thank you, Troy. We can move on to the bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. We have roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayo?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Pet?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. We move into new business, which we only have the one item. Employee appointments, resignation, retirement requests.
Yep, so we got a, actually a longer list than normal, so we have a couple appointments. Two staff members just hired for teaching special education. One at MEA, one at Grove. If you remember, probably about a month or two ago, we talked about the the need at Grove, and that would only be, this is an ad position based on class or the section sizes or the caseloads there. So we were able to actually to find someone to fill that MEA position first, which had to be filled, and then we were able to move on to the Grove one. So we have both of those filled, and then Rebecca Johnson started today as the new ASOP coordinator. And then resignations, we have two people taking different jobs.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
I'd make a motion to recommend approval of the following professional staff appointments as well as the support staff appointment.
We have a motion in a second to approve the professional staff appointments, support staff appointments, and the support staff resignations as printed?
Oh, we didn't do, didn't do the resignations yet.
Oh. Just the appointments. There was a motion in a second to approve the two professional staff appointments and the one support staff appointment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now I'll make a recommendation to approval of the following support staff resignations.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the two support staff resignations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking at the calendar, what is the date for the all-staff welcome back?
It's going to be on August 30th.
August 30th, okay. And we have the opening of the Wood Trust Bank Field coming up on August
19th.
19th.
That is also the luncheon date, correct?
And that is the new staff luncheon?
Lunch and 11:30.
Okay. And the next time we meet, school will be in session. Where'd the summer go? So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and providing your input, and have a good week.